Good evening, I'd like to call the meeting for the Region 15 of Education to order for Monday, November 27. Can we please stand for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, liberty and justice for all. The mission of Region 15, a collaborative community committed to excellence is educate every student to be productive, ethical, engaged in the global society with proven and innovative learning experiences, supported by its strong community whose decision-making is based on the best interest of all students. We will start with our student representative, Ms. Chelsea James.
Good evening, so as far as the elementary school news and LMS news, I'm so happy to announce that my club, Big Brothers and Big Sisters, I've worked with the Vice Principal over at LMS, Mrs. Milo, and the LMS preschool and kindergarten teachers to pair 24 students, including myself, to classrooms. So it's great news. And PhD students are able to work in these classrooms with children to learn what it's like to be a teacher and the skills required to conduct a class. And since the girls' swim team has just ended successfully, I'm able to begin soon. So I will be starting this Wednesday, November 29, in Mrs. Kula's preschool classroom, so really excited about that. Last Tuesday, a representative from the Salvation Army came to LMS and picked up 11-plus boxes of food donated by LMS students and families and for their yearly holiday food drive. So once again, Region 15 elementary schools are also partnering with Barnes &amp; Nobles in Waterbury to bring a number of special events to the elementary schools. So to kick off this year's exciting season, each of the four schools will release their virtual story hour. And this will be recorded on November 29. So be on the lookout for email from LMS and pay more to participate and join. So next, the collection of new warm clothing for Region 15 children in need is going on now. Middlebury and Southbury Social Service Department have identified 25 children in our neighborhood that need assistance this winter. So if you wish to join our efforts in providing warm clothing to a neighbor, you can follow the website that follows on their school webpage. The LMS community is also once again making their monthly mac and cheese boxes for the Southbury Food Bank. So the goal of the PTO is to donate at least 40 boxes this month. So this month's drop is being sponsored by the third grade families. And to learn more about how to stock the shelves, you can also learn more on the website. The LMS PTO is also excited to host Family None Fun Night for December. This will include winter crafts and cookies on Tuesday, December 5. And to accommodate as many families as possible, there will be two time slots. One at 4:30 to 5:30 and the next from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. Friday, December 8 is Pyjama Day in partnership with Connecticut's Children's Foundation. And PJ Day for the kids kicks off their 11th year with this mission not only to raise money, but to honor the brave children fighting cancer each day. So to have your child or children participate, you can send them to school Friday, December 8 with their pajamas and $1 for donation. Monday, December 25 through January 1, as we typically assess. In Palm Rock Elementary School news, on December 1, there will be an early dismissal at 1 o'clock for professional development. December 5 is Roller Magic Night from 6:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. And December 5 to January 1, once again, is no school. In MES news, on November 29, at 6:00 p.m. is MES's virtual storytime partner with Barnes &amp; Nobles as well. On Friday, December 1, at 5:30, MES is having a movie night. It will be held in the gym and admission is a new unwrapped toy from their Amazon Christmas list, which is also located on my website. You can wear your pajamas, bring blankets, pillows, all the works for a cozy night. Concessions will also be sold and an appearance with surprise guests will also happen. And the evening will also feature teacher's experience, teacher experience raffles for students. So lastly, in Gainfield news, the fourth graders have, I'm sorry, the fourth graders had a special treat last week as Rachel Jane, a meteorologist from NBC New Connecticut News, came to visit the students and talk to them. And a highlight of the visit was Snow Monster NBC's weather Jeep, which students loved. Soulshine Arts LLC in Woodbury offers music together, family and movement classes for ages zero to eight, or sorry, yes, for ages zero to eight all year round. Come try a free class at your convenience and you can move, dance, drum, sing, and jam with the rest of the crew. In Gainfield news, just to add on, they have been approved this year for the Toys for Tots drop-off. So we invite you to spread the joy and make a difference for all the children that you can. And with this opportunity, you can contribute to the holiday spirit and bring smiles to the children in need. And the last day to drop off your donations will be Friday, December 6. Tomorrow, November 28, is school picture retakes. So Life Touch will be returning to Gainfield Schools to hold these picture retakes. November 30 is the PTO Holiday Fair. And this year's Holiday Fair will be held in the Library and Media Center at GES on Thursday, November 30. December 2 is the 24th Annual Winter Celebration. So Southbury Parks and Rec is proud to announce its free 24th Annual Winter Celebration with new enhancements. And so the holiday celebration will feature many activities within the theme Be the Light, including the annual tree lighting, the lighting of the dreidel, Santa's arrival in the fire truck, hot cocoa, holiday crafts, sing-alongs, cookie decorations, winter scenes, photo opportunities, and much more. This event will be held Saturday, September, December 2, from 4 to 7 p.m. And sensory-friendly activities will be held from 3 to 3:45 p.m. Last couple of things, on December 8, again, is Pyjama Day for the kids at GES. December 11, and this is a fun one, it's Dress Like Mr. Y Day. For his birthday, the students will be dressing like Mr. Y, which is the gym teacher over at GES. And last year, I was a part of a gym class called Pure Health Educators where I was able to go teach there and I taught his gym class, so he's a great teacher, blast. Last day on January 9 is the Grade 5 Winter Dance. Oh, this is the last day, actually. GES's Holiday Fair is next Thursday, November 30, and there will be gifts for guardians, parents, siblings, grandparents, pets, and more. And the gifts range from $0.50 to $10. And to have your child buy gifts, some cash, or a check made out to GES PTO in an envelope with GES Holiday Fair, your child's name, teacher, amount in clothes, and the name of the people your child will be shopping.
Thank you so much.
Yes, so now I'm taking the role of Ava. So in sports news, the football team has ended with a great win against Notre Dame, Fairfield on Friday, the 21st, sorry, Tuesday, the 21st. The boys finished their season 6-4 with a winning record for the first time since 2018. We want to congratulate them on an amazing season as they have grown so much and we hope that the underclassmen are able to carry on the legacy from the years to come. As the fall seasons have come to an end, winter sports are ramping up. Both girls and boys basketball teams, swim and dive, gymnastics, hockey, wrestling, indoor track, ski team, and winter cheerleading will all be starting up soon. We wish every team luck as they begin their seasons and look forward to seeing all of their accomplishments.
Any questions for your support?
So I thought the program you were mentioning that you're fostering the Big Brothers and Sisters, sounds like a great idea. Just a question on logistics, like how does it work? Like do you just go over like the schools down here or you have to carve out time in your day?
Okay, yeah, so that's a really good question. So the specifics are a little tricky. So being a senior, I'm allowed to leave my last period if I have a study hall on my rotation day. So I can leave then and since I can drive, I'm also able to just leave. What's, I'm sorry, it was, why am I blanking? LMS, yes, it is LMS. So I'm able to just leave LMS, but for the kids that can't drive or the underclassmen, what they do is we worked out a bus. So there's a bus that will shuttle them to LMS and then they would have to get a ride home. But I tried to, I spoke with my vice principal, my principal, about working out maybe two years to also go during study halls, but unfortunately, it's only a student privilege. So that bus is a really, it's a really great service for the students who can't drive.
And you're part of the girls' swim team?
Yes, I am.
Congratulations on your championships, which you guys just got, that's just wonderful. So I assume we're gonna have the whole team.
Yeah, I'm so excited.
Yeah, congratulations. And an undefeated season as well. This is a really big deal, so that's wonderful, congratulations.
I'm hopeful too. I'm really trying to swim for Marist, but they are D1, so we'll see. But I'm doing my very best, so I'll let you know.
Well, thank you very much. Next, we have a presentation on field trips. My PhD students. All right.
Pinch it in. You'll get it almost, excellent presentation. All right, so we had talked last year about some of the field trips that are happening, some of the new ones. So I wondered over just kind of a little bit of an overview of some of the field trips that we have. And then we had, for the first time in a very long time, we had two student trips that took place over the summer. So there's some students here tonight telling you a little bit about their experience. Some examples. Elementary schools, these are examples. This is not a comprehensive list of everything that we do. These are some of the examples where we take students to get that experiential learning opportunity where they can be in places, learn. This one is that students are studying for Washington, Connecticut. Some of the middle school field trips that we go to, CMA, CNBA are the Connecticut Music Competition. It's usually written for Harper and it's a statewide competition. We went to a French concert. Lake Compounds, they actually do science there, it's not just going roller coasters. And then some of the high schools, these again, kind of a small sampling, the White Memorial. We actually have an orienteering class where you go to White Memorial and do orienteering. We have a law state student, so I guess that means they all have done a good job, both the staff and students. And then we've kind of taken really all around, meaning that some of these are the more big trips. Harvard, Boston, the Grand, these are the last couple of days. And then these were kind of the big experiences this summer. We took students to Japan. We'll have to talk about that in a couple of minutes. There's a video I'll show you. Put together. Video from National Parks trip. And with us tonight, we have Nick. You saw that what we didn't get in the video was he was really surfing that hill. It was just that one time. Nick was on the National Parks trip and Chelsea, who's just speaking on every part of the agenda, mistakes, I have a couple more things for you. And Nick, you want to come up a little bit and talk a little bit about the trip and Chelsea, a little bit about the experience, what you got out of it, and help the board understand kind of the impact it made on you being able to be a part of these experiences.
All right, so I'm Nick and I went on the National Parks trip. The National Parks trip was an amazing experience where I got to see a bunch of beautiful places that have many experiences that otherwise would not have been possible at my age. I was able to go pretty much to the base of the Hoover Dam. It's one of the many parts of the Colorado River, the barrier of the refreshing and the hundred degree heat. We went to Bryce Canyon, Zion National Park, and they had some of the most breathtaking views I'd ever seen. We had enough time at Bryce that my newly made friends and I were able to hike all the way to the bottom of the canyon and then back to the top. Grand Canyon had some amazing views, as my boss likes to put it, it's just a giant hole in the ground. Our time at the Grand Canyon was limited by time exchange due to traveling, but it was a good experience. Mr. Samaria and I had to miss the trip to the observatory at night because of the lunch reaction I had at a restaurant. But the rest of the trip made, more than made up for it. We sat in the hotel lobby for four hours. The most important part of the trip for me was the friends I made. Two of my friends from the elementary school went on the trip and they were one of the majors instead of what. My mom told me that they were going, that I should go too. Turns out their mother said the same thing. I had already known of most of the people on the trip, but never really talked to them. The bus ride to Bradley and the first 45 minutes at the airport had to have been the most awkward of the entire trip. It was probably 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning and none of us had slept and none of us related with each other. Before we boarded the plane, we had all started to get to know each other and had some funny experiences. For instance, Owen and Abby had unknowingly left the security zone without their boarding passes to go to the only Dunkin without a line. Mr. Samaria had to convince the TSA officer to let them have the passes again. By the time we got to the hotel in Canavoo, Utah, we all started to get close. In Utah, we spent every night at the hotel swimming, playing Uno and watching whatever movies we could get on TV. We ate peanut butter and jelly sandwiches on Hawaiian rolls with Pringles for lunch at Bryce and Zion. Whoever came up with that, that idea was pretty genius. The rest of the week, we were inseparable, doing pretty much everything together and still playing Uno and watching movies. Every day. The memories that I made will be with me forever. The few I became friends with that week still hang out as often as we can. Many of us spent the last few nights before school started again hanging out. Some of us had mentioned that we wanted to go on another trip like this again this upcoming summer. This trip also influenced my future. Last year, I decided I wanted to go to school being an airplane mechanic. And one of the best schools in the country was in Utah. At first, I didn't want to go because of how far away it was, but now it gives me a good excuse to go back.
Thank you.
Good question. How did you get around from park to park?
We had a tour bus, a big tour bus and just slotted into it. Any other questions? Thank you.
So unfortunately, I don't have a video. You really beat me on that one. But my time in Japan is absolutely amazing. There are truly no words to describe the beauty and serenity that I experienced firsthand. The tribute, the trip, sorry. The trip was the last tribute from my grandmother before her passing. So with each gorgeous surrounding, I saw and felt her warm embrace. I marvelled at the meticulous craftsmanship created in every detail of ancient, sorry, let me start that one. I marvelled at the meticulous craftsmanship evident in every detail of ancient temples and the cutting-edge technology shaping the country. The warmth of the locals, known for their politeness and hospitality, transferred my journey, transformed my journey into a cultural embrace. Although I've had Japanese food before, like sushi and ramen, there is nothing like eating real, authentic Japanese food. Each dish freshly articulated and created, made for a delightful adventure in itself. In Japan, we visited a temple which was located in a deer park. And these friendly deer would walk right up to people and allow them to pet them and feed them, which was absolutely amazing. Don't see that in Connecticut or US. So one of my favorite nights in Japan was our last night. I believe we were in Kyoto, but there were a lot of different cities that we traveled to. And around 9 o'clock, we all gathered at the hotel and we traveled down to this karaoke restaurant that was down the road. And it was so much fun. We broke off into about groups of 10 and we went into these little karaoke booths that were like completely soundproofed, so everyone was going crazy. And we were singing our hearts out and there was so much passion and it was a lot of fun. Just the trip in itself was absolutely, it was mind-blowing. Just seeing the culture firsthand, being so many different people, not only that we're there, but also on the trip. I made a lot of good friends, so it was a great experience and I would love to just experience that again.
Thank you so much, Chelsea. Any questions?
It's true, was it just people from Region 15 or the other states? Wait, then how come you didn't know those people on the trip?
It was more really people I had talked to. Yeah, we were all different ages.
I just want to say thank you so much to both of you for coming and talking about your trips. I think the Japan field trip was the first one, first field trip that this board approved post-candidacy. So it was like a little bit nerve-wracking to do it because it had been a while since we did field trips. But it's just wonderful to see you guys reaching out and going beyond your comfort zones and seeing the connections that you made, not only with fellow students, with your chaperones too, who I understand many are Region 15 staff. So I just really appreciate that you're reporting back and letting us know. It's really fun to see how it was here and we approved it and now you guys went and you're letting us know how it was. So it's very gratifying and I'm just really grateful that you guys had such a good experience.
So thank you for sharing your experiences. They sound like amazing trips. You know, it's funny to come from the meeting we're just in, when we're talking about fundraising, she said I agree, you're like about these wonderful experiences and you can't help but, you know, want every student to have that opportunity. So I think we've spoken in the past, like when these are presented to the board, you know, there is a price tag associated with these. And I've asked the question in the past, but maybe when, you know, the recent trip is presented in a couple of months, you could come prepared to make some more about how we're going to make that more affordable to those. I mean, in the past, you've mentioned fundraising, like how much fundraising is actually done like on average? How are we able to kind of defer some of that cost? So students who want this opportunity, they will, they have the resources, you know, are more able to participate in some of these experiences. Yeah, because one of the things, and one of the reasons we wanted students to be a part of this conversation, the sooner we can have these conversations and the more lead time we can provide with the family, allows some of this to happen. We have short turnarounds in terms of providing the families to save the money, you know? And as expensive as these trips are, they're also, you know, to take a family to Japan or even the trip that Nick went on, the cost is pretty substantial. You know, so here's what this is, a way for families to provide an opportunity to a student that has a family and might not be able to afford to take my whole family to Japan. If you go on a school trip and you have an experience that you might not otherwise get. You know, and there's also, even the cost of the trip is more equitable than some families that are even more. So there are a couple of different layers of that. We also want to balance some of the different trips so that lots of students can access multiple different venues. Not all of them need to necessarily fly to Japan. You know, some of them, maybe we'll put back at, I think the Boston Pundles is probably the more affordable trip than this. You know, and certainly we've got to try to build, as we start to move into this space, make sure that there's a wide variety of trips that are planned and try to let families know about them in their freshman year, maybe you go your senior year, even though there's going to be an experience that you can go back to. So yeah, I think the short answer is it's unlikely that we're going to be able to fundraise enough to pay for the trip. You know, and so hey, on the lead time and available options, you know, the Japan trip. We think there was some fundraising, but there wasn't a ton, right?
Yeah, I don't believe there was much, but there was.
And also, the rich trip was originally for 40 students and because it was standing room only at the event where they announced it in the informational section, they ended up adding a whole other bus. They doubled the amount of students to go and they still had kids to go because it was too full. So it was, you know, there was definitely a desire for, can't believe it. Any other questions? Thank you very much, Chelsea. All right, next we have the five-year capital project of my daughter, Katie James.
How many years have you done this now, Josh? Sorry, fourth, fifth, it's like version four?
We started this the year before, not the full board, but the council plan, we started the year before you died.
Yes, so it's evolved, we kind of keep sculpting it against it. As Josh and I said, it'll stay in draft for a long time, but it is starting. The good news is you'll see a lot of things that are at least going to get ticked off the list with the, with the upcoming blockwork. So first page that was interesting, so it's a, all this is used for planning purposes that we go through. We're going to look at different ways to allocate funding, budget estimates or cost estimates are in there. One, you'll note the picture on the right is actually a fire pressure pump at Long Meadow. The pump wasn't on our list. The pump wasn't terribly old, but it had a, the main computer had a failure on it. So about maybe early August, there was about $45,000 on our job. So I mean, in the land of things that evolve, you know, not really on the radar, a functioning unit and you find, but kind of like your car at all worst and stops. So just kind of notice to go through the journey, there's things out there.
Capital plan is what we know about.
Yes, we know about that exists, but like fire pump, that keeps the pressure in the long metal sprinkler heads to whatever PSI. So now that's new, not on the list anymore. We always thought it was good to kind of take a history of where we've been in the past. We did a pretty large phone system upgrade in 1920. A lot of lighting upgrades, extensive boiler repair at high school. We did obviously a solar project at Long Meadow, the solar project at Roshan Bowl was the year prior, I believe. We did a lot of HVAC upgrades at Popper Elementary School in Gainfield. One of the larger ones being the media center at Gainfield. And Middlebury Elementary School, we did a lot of kindergarten, in the kindergarten wing. And Middlebury Elementary School, we did a lot of kindergarten, in the kindergarten wing, some partitions and enclosures. Twenty twenty-one, repaved the parking lot. Again, also did another HVAC unit on Middlebury Elementary. We did the rear flat top roof at Mary I Johnson, some side rock repair at Long Meadow and obviously the major elevator upgrade we got at the Amber High. I've never said.
Long Bear, that was the first.
Why is the first one?
You're not fundraising for it.
I know, right? It was like six elevators there. At twenty-one, twenty-two, we did the portable classes at Long Meadow, which took forever open. We did the natural gas conversion at Hayfield. And Palmer High School, we did the locker room and obviously the small bleacher set that is now on the table. Twenty-two, twenty-three, we launched our pool study. We did the gas line conversion at Memorial. We did a section of tile at Rochambeau. And we have Middlebury Elementary, we did some extensive work in the office. We had some issue with drainage and water seeping in. We did a floor replacement there and obviously the fire pump replacement at Long Meadow. Bringing it's kind of into items through the bond, through the Long Meadow capital. You'll see floor replacement in here kind of throughout. We do think those will kind of be, as, as we go, will fill in areas. I mean, in theory, a lot of our floors are older. You could do a lot of carpet to tile conversions. You'll see that kind of as we go through the process. Security camera upgrades, that is, will come from capital is also a fifty percent match coming from the state. Additional school security upgrades, that is the additional hard swipes and access. Long Meadow, the front teacher, the main parking lot at the top has been extensively patched. We do think that that is in the bond package and that you will see some piers and puddles developing in that lot. Lung though, the, the main roof on the building that is also inside the bond, we do think obviously there's state reimbursement there, forty-eight percent on the matching. Additional flooring, HVAC controls and additional replacements. Long Meadow obviously is an all AC building. So we're continuing to do a lot more study work around those as far as getting better costs and square investments. There is five large AC units that service that building. They're all what's called R twenty-two units, which R twenty-two is the old freon that's no longer manufactured, still exists in the world and still purchase it. But like a lot of your homes now, what's called R fourteen A, which is more the environmental refrigerant that's in there. Most of our units are R twenty-two. So obviously parts still available, hooks still exist, which is obviously it's an end-of-life product that's out there. Lung Meadow does have a small generator that will eventually go towards its end of life. There's some, there's some parts issues out there for some of those. That does do what's like life safety. It does kind of the small, it powers, I believe, there's a main injector pump, the septic system, and it does a small light. Rochambeau, same thing, the camera system upgrade, that will be a combination of capital plan and grant. The locker replacement, which obviously the board approved at our last meeting. Fire alarm replacement, we value a panel upgrade as some of the warmers know that kids at Long Meadow, we had an issue with their fire alarm. Lastly, and some of that is some issues with the smoke head and the main panel. So we do, we are trying to explore the idea of upgrade at that location as well. And as well as that Memorial is coming up further on.
Excuse me, then you just said Long Meadow. Did Long Meadow also have a fire panel upgrade or gym or?
Rochambeau, Long Meadow had fire upgrade, panel upgrade and engine torque.
Okay, but they did not have an issue with it?
No.
Rochambeau did have the issue.
Rochambeau, security upgrades as well and HVAC upgrades, which are inside the bond. Within HVAC separated for Rochambeau, we think that'll be the current pneumatic system for temperature controls, basically, you know, obviously controls heating in classrooms. It is actually a system what's called, runs over actually air compressors. So there's actually all air tubing that runs through all the walls. It's common in design older schools. So the idea is convert that over to electric, electronic, because obviously a lot of tubing goes all over the building and there's issues and it's in the line. So we do think as part of that, that bond package money will look upgraded those because that controls the valves and even classrooms. So that'll be a big upgrade. Bathroom upgrades as well. We do think was noted on one of our roofing studies was the the section gym roof is up for replacement. That's further out and obviously additional bathroom and flooring upgrades at Rochambeau. Just in those we go through two, Rochambeau is on a septic system. Rochambeau, PES and Hayfield are on separate. The septic's run, we pump them, they're inspected, but as folks know, there is issues at times. Hayfield actually has like about four separate systems that was added on too. So and those are all the areas concerned again, don't exist in the capital plan. They're serviced, but Rochambeau as well has the same challenges. Middlebury Elementary School. We have the media setup upgrades, those are inside the bond. The camera, the camera security upgrades also inside the bond. The clock system replacement, current clock system runs like a relay system throughout. It's all wired. The new system's now go wirelessly and that controls your bell system. So it kind of works out on a count of clock, if you will. So you basically replace all the clocks. There's a mainframe that syncs them all to it. Works quite well. Obviously, the new well or the public water supply, we're still waiting for the application of the federal dollars and state on the water line. That money is inside the bond. HVAC replaces, we could put those a little farther out. They are inside the bond, but we're continuing to get some more study work with Middlebury Elementary's. There is, there is one hall with that's kind of a, is half AC and half not. So that, that section, that unit isn't holding up under it as well. And HVAC, the building controls, that's our billing management system that controls essentially all your furniture. Memorial Middle School. Same kind of same thing, the camera system upgrade, that'll be capital and grant. The fire panel upgrade, which we did receive some pricing on the upgrade for that, that was over fifty-five thousand dollars. We're still exploring the options on that as well. The media center upgrades, that is inside the bond, which kind of is in pricing around where the final numbers on that. The PA system does have some issues on some speakers and relays. We need to kind of get inside that. That's an older system there as well. Additional floor replacement throughout the building, again, just the, the main foyer, for example, does have a lot of stress cracks in the tile that will go a long way to refresh that area. The basketball courts return out currently tennis courts at Memorial. We need to look at ideas and options for kind of ripping that up and putting down blacktop over that. The boiler replaced, so much obviously goes in lieu of the natural gas line being pulled into Memorial and that'll be a, a steam to hot water conversion. Steam boilers are older and inefficient. They were kind of put in divert poplar in the fifty, sixty, seventies. So this would be with convert that over to hot water, which would be very efficient in the future. Cafeteria door in the patio outside the calf, we've looked at this somewhat, the idea of opening up that space better. The current location is very crowded as far as number of kids and possibly in the springtime or so, it could open up. We do additional concrete, maybe then trail off into additional patio. It would be a double door set there. Probably some person on your gutter system above that and that would open up that calf more at least for the kind of in the spring months. There is, there is, the numbers in the cafeteria are pretty high, not, not over any limits, but they are.
Do you look at possibly closing that out, like just making it just one bigger area and that?
We, we could, we could explore that. That, that's an option. The idea of coming off, you're probably talking about if you bumped off. A couple million, yeah, it's million. Million, if you actually opened up the roof that in, yeah, pretty significant because you have to take that, that main wall out, extend the roof structure over significantly. Not, not off our radar, but it's something we need to kind of explore. I, we see the numbers are at Memorial, but yeah, there's, there is some, it could work. I got dumped off on some castle boards, just the the way the current structure is, the, the, all the roofwork sits obviously on that wall and you have to bump up the structural steel if it's involved, but not. Yeah. Good idea. Yeah. HVAC upgrades and the, and the clock, clock system place, same thing, the idea of what the wireless clock system, working on the atomic system, the atomic clock and all those things together. HVAC upgrades, kind of on a side note, HVAC upgrades, I think as we get into some indoor air quality studies, we have kind of in the HOTS controls on that study work, where basically we go through all your HVAC units. I do think in the next I think the study is going to take some time, it's required by the state for one, but also just good practice as well. I think we'll learn a lot more about a lot of our current ones we have. We know the age of them, kind of where they are, but as far as different options for placement upgrades apply and kind of on modern ideas, I think that would be good going forward. So I do think, one thing that I think will mature in the capital plan more is some HVAC sequences. There's a lot out there now as far as controls, energy savings and those sorts of things. And and just kind of bathroom, I double into the bathroom, that's my air. And additional bathroom upgrades and floor replacements, I think, is a general theme throughout, throughout that as well. Opera High, kind of the, the largest of the list, I would say of, of a lot of things. The good news is a lot of things are on the bomb. I think we did kind of start to remove some off the list. Obviously, the bleachers, the outside storage buildings are currently permitting that. I changed to pool upgrades or replacements, having basically replacing kind of the whole pool. So I think by that point, it's like, it's easier to call it a pool replacement rather than the other thing. Auditorium lighting and sound, we did do the sound, if they're ready, we are getting pricing for lighting pretty quick and finalized those numbers. So that's good. Those are inside the bond. The tennis courts are bids closed, actually have interviews with our two finalists actually next, this week and have that information on finance next week. Fire panel replacement, we're researching our options on that main fire panel as well to see what we can do if, if there's an upgrade path for this building as well. Kind of the same thing with supply systems here as well. Again, functions works, but obviously getting toward the trend of life. Collider upgrades, we just had our first kind of kickoff meeting, which was actually kind of cool. We kind of got some ideas on layouts and the committee got kind of, at least got the kind of gears turning on different ideas and options. So Mr. Nelson, Dr. Jones, Heather and Tom were on the committee and kind of kicking through stuff with the architect. So pretty cool there. Clock system replacement as well. This building has quite a few now, just regular old battery operated clocks. But they would sync to the bell system as well. There's some roofwork that was labeled for up here as well that were hanging inside there. Caving work is inside the bond. Auditorium seating, I want to, the last one I want to dwell on for a little bit, auditorium seating, I did firm up some numbers on, there's about a thousand seats probably inside the auditorium. We did get some numbers around where we'd be for that. So about six hundred thousand dollars, give or take. For kind of some rough numbers on replacement for the full thousand seats in the auditorium.
So I just have a question, and we can't get those with some of our other savings done inside the bond. So at least we'd have like a refreshed lighting, sound, seating.
I would say that that might be a conversation as we get through some of the projects, you know, like some of the, like you see bonding here, some of the fifty to seventy-five thousand, like there's a lot of credit for a billion dollars. Not a lot of six hundred thousand dollar projects at a million dollars. So I think we will start to look. And then, you know, I mentioned before, we also probably should start a conversation of, I mean, you're rather willing to buy a bond of opportunity, not one of design. So I think, you know, having one of design, maybe over a couple of years, you start to build into a a debt service payment and then your second bond, there were like the turf field and the auditorium, some of those roofing pieces, that might be part of bond repair package number two. Then we start to have conversation, you know, that might be a couple of years out and maybe do some build over the next couple of years so that when you have the need for that bond, that payment is there. But we're not, and all of this, we also have some of the money in our capital reserve and we have money in our, now we have operating capital. So some of the things on here might get a lot of operating capital. It might be other things where you intentionally build up our capital reserves, do some. So there's not like a specific funding stream. The goal of this is really to put things that you know about on the list and you can have some of the conversation about how we funded it and. It would be nice to say like ribbon cutting, the new auditorium is all one, you could have done. Reality was probably going to have to stay in some of these things. And so in the list of what's most broken, the lights are more broken than the seats. You know, and so, but you know, like adding a, just don't say. If any other ones, follow Tom, don't say he's an habit to find a one. But you know, Heather's conversation about do you kind of do a hundred thousand dollar fix at Memorial or a million dollar fix? Exactly be part of, if, if we're going to pay for it out of operating or capital reserve, that's a hundred thousand. If we're going to do, you know, a bond package four years from now, you know, maybe you don't do that now, but in four years, you, you put on the bigger, you know, like, you're not going to spend a hundred fifty thousand or a hundred thousand on a project that's been going down for years. So I think that's part of the reason that this list exists, so that they start to have kind of more informed conversations about how we do this. In five years, we didn't have one. Of what, and this is the stuff we know might break in the next five or six years. There's things out there that don't, that are going to break next five or six years. And so, you know, how do we shore up our finances so that if a fire pump breaks in the middle of the night, we have a capital reserve, which is what's there for it, it has the funding to fix those things. And, you know, we don't complete it or something.
And like, right now, when we look at like the auditorium, I talked a little about finance committee. Right now, we're originally thinking for lighting. We think the lighting is going to come in below the half a million dollars. So we're now exploring the idea of the current stage currents that are there are original, or we believe to be original. And we're also looking at the idea of either refinish or replace the main stage floor. So the idea of doing those things together and kind of that, there's enough, we think, to get within that budget parameter that's there and explore that and represent that.
Yeah, I was just saying it in the fact, right? Like when, like the same thing, right? When we did the portable, like let's do it right. One time to the pool, okay, we're not going to do the HVAC, let's do it right, kind of a first time piece. And I know we can piecemeal it, but it feels like the auditorium is used so a lot. There's a lot of shows, a lot of, I mean, I am not versed in theater at all, but if there's always something that I'm getting an alert for and I go to shows here often. So it just seems like it would be something that, and if it's here on the party list, totally fine, but something based on usage.
And the, the nice thing with our seats is they just sit on raw concrete or a lot of other theaters I, I've had where you've got like tile underneath, you have to bait out, which kind of creates more problems when you do that. So the good news is, and the cool thing is, as you talk to the different vendors, the lighting guy has a seating guy. So you don't feel guilty asking for numbers because it's kind of, you know, what are we looking at per, per seat and you kind of just, you know, multiply that across. So it is.
It's not a formal bid if we do the project.
No. Yeah, I do think there's some prevailing wage rates going to bump into with that. So the six might be, you know, six fifty or something like that, but.
Thought you were going to say like.
Nah, I don't know. Well, we'll see. Kind of the, the big item, I think, of, of the capital plan is, is the last item. So every year we do what's called a GMAX rating on the turf field, which, you know, basically it's a, it's a shock compression that they've taken at different points of the field to make sure it is sensitive and absorb balls or players. Once that GMAX rating is outside its parameter, the field is then being kind of unsafe to play. So we did our evaluation this year. We were out there talking to the gentleman, does it? His estimation was you have about five years or so left on that turf, I mean, give or take. Again, it could last seven. Everybody's saying the idea of just be kind of conservative because again, you don't want to use it until it doesn't go anymore. So I do think that, that is somewhere on that outer horizon. We did it the last time, I think the turf was about nine hundred thousand. Maybe, so I, I put a million and a half, but you know, I mean, we'd have to evaluate too what the track looks like by that point. I mean, right now it looks, it's fine. But I do think those are items in the larger tickets that exist out there, HVAC and obviously that turf. Typically, you do it because it's like massive destruction or everything. So typically we do. It is.
Well, because the equipment on the football field, the driveway, the track.
Yeah, so it's, as much as they say they're going to protect it, they don't. So yeah, so I would say of, of everything on the list.
And this doesn't include the track.
That does not include the track.
And, and again, like it's not something that you screw up, it's sort of like a challenge, you bleed, just five years, okay. And they're like, oh, maybe you get two more years and then, you know, maybe you only get eight months out of it, but you can't scramble for the business. There's a lead time for the.
And none of the kids can play, right?
Right, and then they shut it down.
I believe that's that one last goal, I think, is you, it, and your failed was close to it and it was like.
I don't know if failed is grass.
Would they have to move that down?
I don't, I don't know, but yeah. I didn't, I didn't follow that. I didn't, I didn't follow that.
Uh, so I think to get it on the list here, and this is again where. The honest conversation you have to have with with everybody, and these are some big type of things, and definitely are going to fail. And you shouldn't wait until it's a year out and then scramble. So if that is, we're gonna do track and turf at the same time, like, how do we start building? You know, it's really hard to build community and say, well, we knew about this, we know the plan, it's an hour committee. But start now and say, five, five years from now, or four years from now, you need to have enough money built up, we're gonna bond these seven projects. And so, every year, we're gonna put away fifty or thirty thousand in the budget to build up our bond debt. Um, and then so that we can then take a bond out five years from now, that's the conversation that you want to start to have and be transparent about it. Uh, because everybody says be proactive, uh, but sometimes those things. So, you know, and again, we may have to pivot on some of this stuff, but, um, again, this is a conversation. Every conversation we have, if something should show up in the budget, we'll be talking about bond debt.
And lastly, too, apps that you will see is is PS and GS, it's Josh and I looked through the list we have. You have a stu-, you have a study pending, which I'm just, I'm just finishing up the R P for. We know a lot of the challenges exist in the schools, and an architect's gonna do that, and and me to tell you that. You know, again, folks, if that gets a P S, yes, the carpeting is worn, there's challenges in the school, it's functions, it's fine as far as its actual, like, you know. But the roof is old, there's a lot of things in there that need up things, and they gain feel, so we, I don't want to necessarily just go down a laundry list of things that we need for those two schools. I thought in theory, once we get um an architectural review of those buildings, then we'll do a very deep depth study for that work. Again, these are, these are old pictures, even for like the last part, say if they haven't changed, obviously, the tennis courts, we all know, need some, need some attention. Uh, I think that's Tom C D satin, I don't know though. And that's, that's obviously the lighting, so that like all those lightings will be changed, opposed to the upper catwalks, it's pretty extensive, uh, when we do that lighting project. And there, and that will also include all the house lights. Uh, the culinary room is is some of our folks have walked, um, that's all though. And the building that's coming down, it says the envelope's up. I did include. I I told her, I mean, you have to go, oh, did you download PowerPoint? Okay, anyways, in in the one I'll print off, there's just, it would say, you get the finances, the current, um, just a review of what we spent on projects, it wasn't a lot. Um, this is the current bond, uh, that was approved. I I didn't modify the numbers inside of here, um, I I do know, we we know we have to reprogram some dollars inside there, but that is obviously the way, the way they're. The way they sat and the way they were done. Um, portable classrooms, these are the current that exist in the buildings, they're since are are older, more than ten years old. A game field kind of being the the largest section we have. Yes, Long Meadow has two, now we're four additional, and uh, moral middle school, and obviously the one, um, and yes. So a lot of scruples and portals that we don't want necessarily to forget about, but um, we did some refurb on. Middle elementary portal, we did a lot of new trim work and stuff, we had some, some small trim run stuff, we did that over the summer as well.
And I don't think that pump run was great. There's at least four in that fifth grade ground, and then there's like other.
The pump run, I remember the the four in um. The fourth grade ones are like a bizarre portable, they were like, they're not a true portal, but they're still kind of a portable, yeah, they're still a portable. Yeah, um, they were back when they kind of prefabbed together as a portable or something, so they're, it's a strange design, but they're definitely not original, they're definitely not permanent. So you could throw up a portable bucket, so you have a fourth grade, and obviously the fifth grade wing, um, is all important.
So fourteen classrooms, how many kids is that?
Three, three fifty. Uh, and they're all, and they're all occupied, um, Long Meadow actually is housing, uh, whole portal has a. Uh, new special program inside one of those boxes, but the rest are all.
Oh, so then we have more than ten percent of our capital unit portfolios. Because if you add the other ones, and you add, you're saying four, and then four more add L M E S, that's another eight, twenty sixteen. So it can add like eighteen percent, twenty percent of our population that sits a portable classroom. I don't know if that's where you were going, John, but I was just doing that, yeah.
Yeah, we look at it as like, how old are they, and are they still like watertight, and, yeah, you know, but I think, you know, to your point.
Space issue, eighteen, if if it's. If it's that number, even ten percent significant, but when you're starting to get towards twenty percent of our population that potentially sits in not permanent buildings, like.
Yeah, and obviously, you know, P S and G S kind of with with the bulk of them saying that, that the the. The left side portal for game field, I, people, I don't, we can, the the age of those is just whole. I mean, I I I I don't, I don't, I know many folks have gone through there, and they're, they were, they were there when they were there, so.
You took the red one down.
Yes, the the red one, the rochambol one was, I was, I was in there, it was like sad, and there weren't kids in it back then, it was just storage, but. Um, and the other, well, actually, the the portal down by the field, that is an old portable too, that was sinking, that's probably forty, fifty years in in teeter totter. But yeah, it's interesting, look at it though, if you look at percentage, don't we have? Yeah, we'd certainly convert those to the freight. And uh, obviously, the 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 funding comes from kind of, I would say it comes from everywhere, you've got a capital budget, we have leasing options. Uh, we have state grant dollars, we have our own bonding dollars as well. Um, you know, I mean, I think a lot of the takeaways that the board can appreciate, you know, we're trying to try to work for timelines or planning. Um, but there's a lot of cost estimates, um, it's not a cost estimator, cost estimers have. Uh, I think they have really good free advisors, you know, mine are just kind of okay someday.
So I understand, like, the S and G S one there, the five year plan, but. Me get a sense of maybe over the next one, two years, of where are the urgent, what are the projects that are maybe going on?
Well, we've had, we've done a lot of roof evaluations in P S, we have a very good roofing contractor now. Really documents everything extremely well, it's pictures and chili patches. And he's been up there quite often, kind of reviewing different areas, and we believe right now we'll pay up there. Um, so, you know, we did do some pretty extensive uh A C work in the, about E wing, the new wing. Um, in the kindergarten classrooms, that was two, three years ago. Um, game field, obviously, we did the main, the main A C unit, uh, the natural gas upgrade. I mean, in theory, obviously, we're gonna do what we have to do to, to keep them, you know, in 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 good shape. I mean, I would say, from a climate standpoint, I mean, the the custodians that are there, I mean, if you stand there long enough, they'll repaint. I mean, they just, I mean, you know, John Bachi, she at game field and Andy Virginie, I mean, they're very astute on those, and there's a. P S does have a peeling issue, um, because the way we think some of the climate is the building with moisture, when they paint, the paint likes to peel on the walls. Um, we do think originally it was like an oil-based paint that went over that many years ago, and that's why it can't bond through. Um, because I know poor Andy gets gray soon, it peels, um, but those are issues there, I mean, the carpeting, the P S just frustrates me. Um, but I do know with the asbestos tile underneath it, it's totally fine, as long as I just don't break it up. Um, but it would be a massive abatement project, the work we did in the office and stuff was already abated, so it was pretty easy to do that, even that E wing section that we did. Um, but yeah, I I do think, at least for for big pieces, that roof there, we did the roof at game field, that was five years ago, that's my first year here, we were just finishing that up. Um, so overall, the boilers are in good shape, I mean, you know, I I think there's sound. Yeah, the 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 front, the front section, and the gym section, but yeah, I mean, as far as, you know, major expenses to those schools, I don't think there's any yet. Um, the roof at P S probably the only one that's, you know, a little concerning. Are the game field, there there's a shingle section up there that was a little concerned, the architect reviewed it, but if we had to go in and do that, that's probably a fifty thousand dollar job, it's not. It's not a million dollar job, shingle, shingle jobs are easy to bid out, so a lot of folks do that kind of work, um, so I think those are. But yeah, good questions, and it's not, um, we're not abandoning.
Just hypothetically, bond approval till like finish school, like, how long is that typically in other district? Like, if you were building a school.
You're, you're at least a year to study, two, a year to the legislator, you're probably, I would say, from now to like, you know. Kind of a bus pull out in front, that would be six years, five, six.
Six, no, from, no, so now it's a new school, six years.
Yeah, the legislative process along with funding is a year I assume.
And and this study will tell us, like, how long we haven't, like, some major things.
They will, they'll, they'll do a lot of that work, they're gonna give you an analysis of kind of renovate the new for both schools. Kind of the idea of a concept, what it looks like, that the two schools together, um, you know, the feasibility of the properties that we have. Have support for those schools, and there's, I mean, there's a lot of stuff we can use the time table, then say like, go look at this. Um, so the, and those will present a myriad of options. Renovate the new will be obviously an expensive option, but again, that's something off the way, but.
So two questions, one, um, the next thing I'm hearing now about uh athletic fields is uh. An update for the scoreboard, so I know you ca-, you came to the board about, you know, alternate funding for how to fund the scoreboard project. Haven't heard an update for once, do you have an update you can offer about?
Yeah, um, that's proceed, Dr. Jones is working through a fundraising effort to do that, the uh, um, I create the final numbers on that. Okay, all right, exactly, I'll pick his brain, let's put you on the spot, funding for the scoreboard.
So, uh, we have a sponsorship plan to replace the sponsors that are on the football stadium. Um, and so through that, um, that's out to various companies in the area, uh, through that, the primary goal is to replace the. Uh, primary scoreboard on the stadium there, a couple of different quotes out, um, like, different prices for what that might look like. But the the initial plan is to use those sponsorships, uh, we have a couple of different companies who have purchased about large sponsorships where. Um, since this is a public meeting, if they're interested, uh, they should contact Ron Plasky or myself. Um, and we could absolutely uh set them up with the paperwork to do that, um, and and that costs about twenty to thirty thousand.
I'm looking a lot of other options down there that are, you know, large state nights.
The second question, um. Sorry to bring this up. But at the last finance, when you had mentioned you're gonna be doing five year capital, there had been some ongoing discussions about baseball and softball bleachers. Um, and I thought we'd left the last finance saying that that would be mentioned in this five year capital, but is the plan still to. Address baseball and softball.
Yeah, yeah, the plan is, we're just a spring, trying to get, I want to get the building down, and then we'll figure out what our layouts and plans, once we get that that out of there. Second, like I said, we've got to come in back, that fence line is gonna run, it's there.
Just because there was an add to that, it was to look at bleachers for all high school varsity. In sporting fields, that was coming back to it as a package.
Yeah, inside the tennis court bit, for example, was a bleacher pad as an option, um, and obviously the idea of uh baseball and softball. I it really, I want.
That wouldn't hold up, other work.
No, no.
Like soccer's done, but we have a baseball and softball season coming up, I wouldn't expect that.
And and I think. Yeah, I know, one, once we, once we knock down the building, I kind of want to look more at, I don't think it's a lot of money, just the idea of kind of reconfiguring where we can. Is down there, like the dumpsters and all that kind of stuff, and make it look a little more, um, H C T-ish. Uh, maybe get some privacy fence around the dumpsters, like a concrete pad around, you know, you gotta. Pull it together and and present something more to finance when you're a little deeper, so, but I do think probably not a lot of money, it could look.
That it just kind of like pop instead of bleachers.
Yeah, I mean, it'd be nice someday to have a small, almost like what. An Eagles how project was done on the baseball field, like a small, like a ticket window, again, I, in the land of life, you know, I know it's all, it all costs dollars and it's all complicated, but. You know, maybe a little bit.
But not, not to harp on it, but this is the meeting where you talk about these things, and so that omission, I think, is. It's problematic, so like, you know, if we're gonna cost items out five years from now, it should probably be a line item here that says bleachers, and you should do a number of that. Yep, but like, this should be noticed to this group, that that's something you intend to address.
Yes, noted, we do need to, that needs to be, yeah, but.
Understood, we did talk about that finance, so I guess, it is an active, it's not part of a five year plan, it's part of a five month, you know.
Yeah, and I do think even like, they could lose on the HVAC stuff, I do think there'd be a major revision to that, once you get more study with.
Brand that we have.
Yeah, coming up for the next piece is obviously the, some of the high school A C work, obviously the pool.
Thank you very much, and I, and with them, we'd like to, you know, with our upcoming board force. Our focus on facilities, it'd be nice to like hit, like, what you think would be appropriate for us, like, how we did the flash given on the floor or whatever. That was so fun.
Yeah, like, like really cool stuff like that.
You're not gonna top it.
Yeah, I don't feel like that.
We never top.
But definitely, like, if you see something like a media center upgrade that, you know, you see coming down the pipe, that's just great.
I would say so, Josh, and going through the plan, like, look at middle elementary school, did a lot of work on some of the A C units, we did a rebuild on. Um, one of the boilers there, so I mean, a lot of things are, again, it could, it could fail any time, but I do think some of the things are, I do think as you evolve, some of these were in a little better shape. And so, some stuff slowly worked, but there's a lot of other things that are, like, high school, burning off steam someday, great, but again, you're talking about a multi-million dollar. Uh, heating upgrade, but you'll get a little bit efficiency, but, you know, it's not, it's fine, you know, getting more H A C into place.
One caveat, though, is no need to go in and do so. All right, any other questions?
All right, um, thank you, may I have a motion for approval, the minutes for November thirteenth? Thank you, Heather, do I have a second? Thank you, Steve, any questions, comments?
Revision, um, sadly, Dr. Chippin was not present. Uh, at the November thirteenth meeting. And we miss her, I wish it was.
I thought she was online.
She thought she was online.
Well, she was online.
Yeah, I had to mark it as remote. Yeah, that would be fine, mark it as remote, because she was. And she was trying to get the. So Jennifer, if you just put remote on that, that'd be great, thank you, Sharon's phone. All right, any other comments or? Great, all those in favor? Great, thank you. Yeah, John's abstaining too, okay, so we have Shannon and John abstaining. All right, next we have information proposals, uh, board committee reports, policy committee, this other wire.
So, Paulson, for including that earlier this evening, we took a departure from our usual. Review of uh five thousand and seven thousand policies to travel back in time and review the booster card policy. Um, and how that implementation has been going, of last year. Um, so we got some good information, hopefully, we'll be putting. The regional difference in information on website, um, appearance, and uh. We will be meeting again. December. Something.
Thank you, any questions to this right? Uh, next we have superintendent report, Superintendent Sin.
Uh, thank you very, very, had a lovely Thanksgiving break, um, right before the break. Uh, some members were, you know, joining me at the cave conference in uh, at Mystic Marion. Uh, appreciate it's very hard to be able to attend that conference, and the timing and distance makes it complicated, so. Uh, appreciate the movement there, there were a lot of sessions for uh board members. I sat out a panel, Spanso sat out a panel, I think we did the team was, um, well represented. I sat out a panel, Spanso sat out a panel, I think we did the team was, um, well represented. And attendance had, uh, was well attended too, it's been, um, really since pre-COVID that. Kind of getting people back into the conference seats and being able to interact with districts throughout the state, so try to thank you. Um, and then the second piece would just be to thank Jim Sidis for your time. Uh, and contributions over the last couple of years, uh, that nameplate is yours to take. As a parting gift and, uh, memory of it, I'm here, if you can sell it on eBay or beyond, um. This will, this will take a percent of the profits, maybe, uh, but I do hope you'll take more than the name, uh, say the way.
Any questions for Superintendent Smith on his report? All right, um, next we have board chair comments, um, I'd also like to echo, um, our superintendent comments about the cave taps convention. Um, that was the weekend before, for the Friday and Saturday before Thanksgiving. Mr. Uh, you know, the presentation that Superintendent Smith did was very well received on artificial intelligence. Um, and it's, it's always interesting. To go to these things, and there's always like one little takeaway that I always find, I'm like, I'm glad I went just because of that. And it, there was like a couple of really good conversations I had with other board members about struggles that they've been having with their district. Um, that made me feel like I had something to contribute and also something to learn at the same time, so that, that was great. I did do the presentation on our region fifteen, uh, four goals and superintendent goals to a pretty good crowd of people. And I have to say it was one of the easiest presentations I've ever done, because all I did was just take off. Um, presentations from our former board event, and just showed how, you know. How the, uh, Mr. Smith came up with the theories of action, how we adopted it, and how it has this whole trickle-down effect into everything that we do in our. Fourth presentations, it was very well received, they had a lot of good questions, um, many that this board has asked. So I felt very well prepared, um, so thank you to the board members who are very active and, um, interested in our goals. Um, just wanna, I was just very proud. To show what region fifteen has done in particular, because the cave person who went off with best practices, I'm like, oh, we do that. Oh, we do that, oh, we do that, so it was really nice and gratifying to do a, like my follow-up part of the presentation. Very much mirrored what the best practice was, which was just very gratifying, so thank you very much to Superintendent Smith, who helped us get on this path. To the board, um, that helps with goals, and to the schools that follow through with the goals and the theories of action. And like I said, I showed those slides and people were like taking pictures and, um, got a lot of good questions, so just very a proud moment for region fifteen. So it was great, um, and the other thing I wanted to say also, um, was to thank. Um, Mr. John Geniusitis and Mr. Peter Baccarelli for their service, um, on the Board of Education. Um, John in particular, I, you know, was appointed here, um, to replace John Cookson. Those are big shoes to fill, um, and I do have to say that Mr. Geniusitis was just as responsible. And willing to participate and volunteer when needed, as Mr. Cookson was. I just really appreciate that, um, you were always, um, willing to help with any ad hoc committee, um, that, um. I asked you to help on, or that Mrs. Rogers asked you to help on, um, I thought, I think you're very dedicated. Um, to your position, and you took your responsibilities very seriously, and for that, I thank you. Um, and, you know, we will, um, miss having you up here, but you will be still participating on the pension and the medical pooling. Right, so we will still see you there, so it's not a whole goodbye, so thank you. And next we have board member comments, any comments?
Uh, just to continue the, the theme about cave, uh. It, it is, uh, very good to, as board members, go again. All these years, all these different districts give, uh, sponsor, give the presentations, it's like, what are they doing in their own district, so it. That absolutely is great to have region fifteen represented, so I don't need to delaborate, you, you both talked about it a lot, but it is, it is very true. Uh, that, uh, uh, that we were well represented, uh. And by very good people who I'm sure spoke particularly about artificial intelligence. And our throughput from board goals, the beer dispatch, to write caps as student data, students. So, and I know you stayed overnight, you gave up a lot of family time, uh, so that's a sacrifice as well, and I personally appreciate that. Um, and then also, um, thank you, so P and C, just, just to say about, um. Uh, so I was president of P and C, and I very much appreciated, uh, the fact that P and C followed up on that booster club policy, and I thought the presentation. From Dr. Jones and Mr. Plasky was also very good in that, uh, it's very nice to see how they, they took a policy that we wrote. And then really took it to heart and like, and, and, and are implementing. And so, of course, it's an ongoing process, but are taking very important steps to implement that policy. Uh, and I, the steps that they described, I thought were really good, and I, I just really, really appreciated that, so thank you to them. And then, that's, and on the down note, but I, the sound. Still, I, I, I watch these meetings, cause, over again, cause I, I don't have Netflix. But I don't know what it is, like I cannot, if it's because you guys are closer, or you just, you project more, but it's just, we. Like if I talk to you like this, we turn, like it is, this is fine, this is not fine, like, and it, like, there were whole conversations. I don't mean to point fingers, but at that end of the table, like where I, like, about the, I just could not, I could not hear anything. And it's, it's, we need to either speak up like this all the time to that microphone, or we need another form of, a way of.
Really has three microphones in it, and it's not totally omnidirectional, and, but new equipment came in.
Yeah, it's actually, it's in my car.
Decided that like, good technology practice is not to install something twelve minutes before the meeting. But I do think recognize that, there's also sometimes everywhere really active, there's some audio in the back, it's hard to hear. Uh, so, uh, we are, we're gonna try to, we have some, so December eleventh, I mean, no promises, no, we're gonna make some, some attempts to install it. Uh, but maybe early, uh. New years celebration for it.
Tell that, I will yell on my.
He's gonna tell all of us, speak up.
Thank you, Steve. Any other board?
I enjoyed my time here, I learned a lot.
Great, next we have comments from citizens, the Board of Education will recognize citizens of Middlebury and Southbury, and citizens are asked to state their name. Their town of residence, and to limit their comments to three minutes, any citizens? Now, okay. Um, regular business requiring board action, may have a motion for approval to apply for an H VAC grant.
Resolve that the Pomprog Regional School District number fifteen authorizes the Board of Education to apply the Commissioner of Administrative Services. And to accept or reject a grant for the H VAC replacement at Pomprog High School.
Um, Mr. Martino, can you speak to this?
Sure, we're gonna apply for, this is a redo of the last grant, there is a seven thousand dollar H VAC unit that we're gonna apply for on the high school. And we also are gonna apply for the half a million dollar unit going into the pool, so one point two million.
This is required language.
Yeah, this is required state. I don't know.
Yes, yes, you do.
Yeah, sorry, yes, absolutely, yes, all right, yes, we do, can't win if you don't play.
Any questions? All right, all those in favor? I think that's unanimous, oh, Sharon, did we get Sharon out it? Hi Sharon, okay, he's an I too, all right.
We could use this guy. But if we have someone participating, there should be a roll call. If we have someone participating.
Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Um, Richard, how do you vote? Yep, I'm motion, Heather, why? Duncan, you say this, I am an I. Shannon?
I.
Tom?
I.
Sharon.
I, I'm an I.
It's unanimous, uh, next may I have a motion for approval to establish an H VAC building committee?
Resolve that the Pomprog Region Fifteen Building Committee, consisting of the Board of Education Finance Subcommittee. Is hereby established as the building committee with regard to the H VAC replacement at Pomprog High School.
Okay, that Heather Rogers was seconded first, but thank you, Richard. Um. Joe, can you speak to this?
Yeah, it, it is, this committee will feel very different than when you do an actual whole building committee, um, to build a school. Um, but in theory, this committee would just approve the bids that go through the project, uh, with the H VAC grants required by the states, have a separate committee. Can't just use a sustained finance committee or whole board, that's what's separate.
Okay, so what this is basically saying is that the board, this motion is for the finance subcommittee to be.
Be the building committee for the H VAC.
Right, so then that would mean that the, um, H VAC, H VAC bids would just go to finance committee and not come to the whole board.
Yeah, it is, it is, it is fifty percent, about forty-eight percent state match we have.
Okay, all right, per vote, but I'm sorry to see the board of that, or want to know about what. Any other questions, go ahead, John.
Um, why wouldn't we want some experts in the field from the towns on that, on that?
You, you could, you could add them on, I mean, we're, we're gonna obviously engage in architectural firm and do the work. You could add additional folks, the, these, this committee typically are very small, it's a small grant, it's one unit, you're two units here, the whole unit being well studied. Um, when you do building projects, like full school projects, yeah, you typically will have, uh, a D P W director, or, or some of those folks. Yeah, it's not uncommon, but.
Specs, it will not be Mr. Martino not expecting out the back units.
No, the cost estimates are done by an estimator, um. Good question, yeah, to, to, on whole loan project, I wanna say there's, there's even a requirement that, I believe, one or two with construction background or something.
If the scope of the committee is a couple of units, does the committee disband after?
Yes, that's it, once, once the project's completed, the committee's suspended, so if you did another, a, a new school project, you would have a brand new committee. With additional members and all this. And if you, if you apply for multiple schools, you need multiple committees, so the challenge is, the grants become very messy, you keep adding buildings to it. So the high school is being our main focus for, you know, mostly H VAC work, um, and it does make the grant. I think better to get approved, a lot of schools that have multiple schools can get approved for multiples, so I think, kind of one is the better path to.
Any other questions? Right. So let's go to vote, Richard, Richard's an I, Heather Wire, I, John's a I, I am an I, Sharon Addit.
I.
Thank you. All right, it's unanimous, thank you. Um, next may I have a motion for approval to prepare schematic drawings and outline specifications for H VAC replacement at Pomprog High School.
Resolve that the Pomprog Regional School District number fifteen hereby authorizes at least the preparation of schematic drawings. And outline specifications for the H VAC replacement at Pomprog High School.
All right, and Heather Rogers second, um, so, Joe, is there anything further to?
No, this is, this is just a lot of the art, like my cost estimates and drawing.
Okay, any questions?
What is that, is this specified by the state?
Min- minimum requirement. Yes, yeah.
Great, Richard, how do you vote? I, Richard is an I, Heather Wire, I, 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 I am an I, Sharon Addit.
Sharon Addit, I.
Steve surrounding, hi.
Great, it is unanimous, good for everyone. Um, next we have a announcement of future meetings, Wednesday, December sixth, finances meeting at central office at P M. On Monday, December eleventh, P and C is meeting at Media Center at six thirty. And also on Monday, December eleventh, we'll have a regular meeting of the board event, we will be discussing our assessments and data cycle. May I have a motion to adjourn, thank you, Heather, do I have a second? Thank you, Steve, all those in favor?
Hi.
Thank you, Sharon.
Thank you, have a nice night.